Such an important event.
I just wobbly these guys, they need to go talk.
They need to go, yeah.
We're such a busy exec.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the June 3 regular city council meeting to order and ask those who'd like to join the council, myself and the Pledge of Allegiance, to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick announcements. Before we begin with our special business items this evening, I'd like to announce that the public hearing related to a proposed amendment to the Polygon Northwest Development Agreement for Affordable Housing, which was scheduled for tonight's meeting, has been canceled. This item will be discussed by the Council Land and Shore Committee at their June 6 meeting, which is this Thursday. And also, Councilmember Goodman is unable to join us this evening, she has an excused absence. So the first item under special business this evening is a Hall of Fame recognition, and Council President Martz and I would like to come to the podium and provide some information on our two winners for this year. We have a very full house this evening, thank you very much, past honorees of the Hall of Fame and our current honorees this evening. The city each year receives nominations for individuals within the community who have made significant contributions, who have showed their volunteerism, their civic mindedness, their ability to raise funds for nonprofits. And Council President Martz and I have been fortunate enough over the last two years to be the two that get to read all the nominations and make the hard decision of who to select. This year, we have selected two nominees, and I'm going to -- two recipients, and I'm going to let Council President Martz talk first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Frances Walton has spent a lifetime inspiring people in our community and across Washington to learn, perform, and enjoy music. At 16, Frances won a local music competition for her skillful piano playing, allowing her to attend Tanglewood Music Center on a scholarship. During her stay there, she was the youngest and the only female student to be chosen for Leonard Bernstein's conducting class. Frances is also an accomplished cellist. Frances' local accomplishments include founding the Bellevue Youth Symphony in 1958, which has won international awards for their music, founding the Philharmonia Northwest in 1972, and conducting it for 18 years, founding the String Music Program for the Isaguas School District in 1964, organizing the Olympic Music Camp, which she ran for 25 years, co-founding a large private music library, and many more programs and activities and clubs. Her work has inspired countless people to become musicians, pursue careers in all aspects of music, and to simply love music. At 91, Frances is still playing and still inspiring those who meet her through music. Frances is receiving our first award this evening to join the Isaguas Hall of Fame.
Our second winner this year is Dan Anderson. Dan is a retired corporate attorney who has made Isaguas home for the last 50 years. Dan has stepped up as a volunteer and leader in the Isaguas Quanis Club, Village Theater, and Eastside Master's Chorus. At the Isaguas Quanis Club, Dan has been working since the '70s to recruit members to keep the club thriving, as well as encouraging women to participate in increasing numbers. He currently serves on the inter-club committee. He has served as president twice, and currently serves on multiple Quanis committees. Dan is the longstanding chair of the High School Scholarship Selection Committee. Dan is one of the longest-serving members of the Village Theater Board, starting his service in the '90s. He has focused on fundraising, and recently, he and his family generously supported the acquisition of an apartment complex for actors currently performing in the five annual main stage productions. Dan has also supported the arts through Master Chorus Eastside. While participating as a singer, he is also an active fundraiser for the group. So Dan has received our second award today, and Dan, if you would stand, we'd like to recognize you. Council President Martz and I were fortunate enough last Thursday to attend the Community Awards and present both of our winners with a token of the city's appreciation. And this evening, we've added their names to the plaque for City Hall of Famers, and we are so grateful that you could bring your family and friends this evening to join in with our past recipients, so we could show you our appreciation. We're really honored by all of the work you've done to make this community a better place. So thank you very much. So I'm going to call for a five-minute recess, which will allow Dan and Frances to greet others in the room, and also, if you do not want to stay for the rest of our council meeting, this is your opportunity to leave the room. So we'll be taking a five-minute recess. Thanks. Thank you, we're back from our recess. Also under special business this evening, ID 0490, National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation, and I'm going to move to the podium and invite Mary Harris to join me up there. Mary is from Moms Demand Action. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries, and whereas the organizers of the National Gun Violence Awareness Day propose that residents of the United States wear orange on June 7, 2019, to raise awareness of and to honor those who have fallen victim to gun violence, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Isaguas, do hereby proclaim June 7, 2019, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I'd like to invite Mary to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Polly. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Mayor Polly. My name is Mary Harris, and I live at 2324 29th Avenue Northeast. I am here as a representative of the local group of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Our reason for being here is especially top of mind and top of heart with many Americans. As you know, three days ago, another tragedy struck our country in Virginia Beach, and 12 people were killed with a gun. Moms Demand Action, we are made up of volunteers, we are moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and community members united to prevent gun deaths in our own community. Some of us are gun owners, some of us are not. Some of us have experienced gun violence personally. Every single one of us wants to keep our families safe. We support the Second Amendment and believe common sense measures can be implemented without infringing on our constitutional rights. We educate parents on simple steps they can take to reduce the risks of unintentional shootings and teen suicide. We advocate for legislation that makes our communities safer, and we support survivors of gun violence. We want to thank the community here in Isaguas, Mayor Polly, and everyone on the council for the proclamation that June 7, 2019, is Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Isaguas. National Gun Violence Awareness Day and the Wear Orange Campaign is a nationwide movement to honor the 100 lives cut short and hundreds more injured by gun violence across our nation every day. Friday, June 7, is the fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you for recognizing it as an important day for our community. We invite you to wear orange personally to recognize the day, and we brought each of you on the council, orange ribbons. We also brought with you, with us, information for you about a very special event happening on Sunday, June 9, at Sam Smith Park in Seattle, at 10:00 a.m., and we hope you'll join us. Thank you for your commitment to the safety of our community. Good night.
Thank you, Mary. The next item on the agenda this evening is ID 0440, End of Legislative Session Report. And tonight, council will be receiving an informational update on the outcomes of the 2019 legislative session from the city's lobbying firm. And I'd like to get Shelley Helder of Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs to make the presentation. Hi, Shelley.
Good evening. Well, thank you for having me. I am Shelley Helder. I am one of your governmental affairs consultants, as Mayor Polly mentioned. Our firm began working with the city just last summer, and so, leading up to the legislative session, we helped identify the city's legislative priorities, and then jumped right into the session in January. The -- I'll go over everything in a little bit more detail, but I want to begin this evening by recognizing the city's legislative delegation. Isaguas is comprised of two legislative districts, the Fifth and the 41st. The Fifth, Senator Mullet, Representative Callen, Representative Ramos; and the 41st, Senator Wellman, Representative Ty, and Representative Tonnesan. All six of these legislators are advocates for the city and for the city's priorities. And so, if you haven't already, as electeds from the city, I encourage you to reach out to your legislators and thank them for the work that they did on the city's priorities, but also for the fact that they just spent four months away from their families. Every weekday, they were down in Olympia, working long, long days through the night. And yes, it's what they signed up for, but that doesn't mean that it's easy. So I definitely encourage you to extend your gratitude to them. So this evening, I'd like to give a high-level overview of what happened during the 2019 legislative session. In your council packets, there is a much greater detailed review of everything that happened. There were thousands of bills that I'll get to in a moment. So if there's something that's not covered, feel free to ask a question, but just know that there's a lot more resources for you in the written report. So the 2019 legislative session was the first year of a two-year legislative cycle. The legislature operates on a two-year basis. The first year is the long year, 105 days. The legislature's primary objective during this time is to adopt their biennial budgets. They managed to adopt the capital operating and transportation budgets on time, and finished within the 105 days, which is the second time, or for two years in a row, they've managed to do that. It's a big deal. As I mentioned, there were thousands of bills introduced. There were 481 bills that passed into law. Roughly 22% passage rate, slightly higher than the historical rate, but really incredible amount of work that goes into each bill that's considered by the legislature. Democrats were in control of both chambers, and so that could be a reason for the slightly higher passage rate. But the majority of bills that do make it all the way through the process are, generally make it through with strong bipartisan support. So despite Democrats having stronger majorities in both chambers this year, we did see a lot of bipartisan work. So real brief update on the operating budget. I'm sure you read about it potentially in the news, but essentially, what happened is the March economic revenue forecast came out, and it showed that there was an increase in revenue up from the February forecast of an additional $550 million, which, when you're trying to balance a budget, is really great news. Unfortunately, that additional money was still not sufficient for the legislature to meet their current obligations with the maintenance budget. And so, there were an additional six bills that were passed that generated roughly $850 million in additional revenue over the next two years. And so, the final operating budget is $52.4 billion, and that's about 20% higher than the budget from just this last biennium. So moving on to the city's legislative priorities, as I mentioned, prior to the legislative session, we worked with you all to identify what are the top items that the city wants to focus on. The legislative session is very fast-paced, and by the time the session starts, if you don't know what you're hoping to accomplish, chances are, you're not going to accomplish it by the end of 105 days. And so, in the fall and preparing for the winter, we worked with you all to adopt a legislative agenda and also a policy manual. Your legislative agenda were the top three items, and they just so happened to be focused on the three budgets. The PFAS request was originally an operating budget request, the implementation of the I-90 Front Street IJR is a transportation request, and the Isaguas Opportunity Center is a capital budget request. And that was strategic. We didn't want to be competing against ourselves within a single budget, and also knew that our legislators were, though they have the city's interests at heart, also have a lot on their plate when it comes time for the session. And so, wanted to make things simple for them and make it easy for them to speak up on the city's behalf. So I'll just provide a brief update on what we did to advance each of the legislative priorities on the agenda, and then what the outcome was. And I'm sure many of you are already aware of the great success that we had this session. We requested $400,000 to continue the work to characterize the contamination from the PFAS chemicals and to design a pilot cleanup program. This work's being done in coordination with the Department of Ecology. So, unique to this year, rather than have the city advance the request and ask for the money to come back to the city, we worked with the Department of Ecology to coordinate with them and Eastside Fire and Rescue to have the money go directly to Department of Ecology. And there were two reasons for that. The first is, if the money were to come to the city, it would have to go through the Department of Commerce, that's just how state resources are allocated. And when it goes through the Department of Commerce, they charge a 3% admin fee. So automatically, we would have lost some of that funding. And then, secondly, is that Department of Ecology is already a partner at the table and has already been working with the city in good faith. And so, we knew that the individuals that we'd established that working relationship with were going to be there to help us advocate for this funding. The funding was included in both the House and the Senate proposed budgets, which is significant, because that means that not only your senators, but also your representatives brought this forward to their budget leadership and said, "This is something that's important to me and to my district. Please don't include, don't provide a proposed budget without this." And that's a really big deal for your legislators to communicate that to the budget writers, because there are many demands on the budget and many demands on the items that they prioritize. So we worked with Representative Callen and Representative Ramos, Representative Ty and Representative Sen in the House to submit the request to the House Operating Budget Writers, and then in the Senate with Senator Mullet and Senator Wellman. Ultimately, the final budget does include the $400,000. As I mentioned, we started off with this being an operating budget request, morphed into a capital budget request throughout the session. This was as a result of conversations with the Department of Ecology, as well as with Senator Mullet, who, due to his role on the capital budget, felt that there would be a greater opportunity for the funding to be included in the capital budget versus the operating budget. Ultimately, what it means for us is that still the funding flows to Ecology and then the project gets done. It's just a matter of how the state appropriates the funding. The next item on the list was a request for $4 million to begin implementation of the I-90 Front Street IJR. We knew heading into session that a transportation request of any size was going to be difficult. The legislature had already indicated that gas tax revenues were not at the level that they had been anticipating, and there were some, there are some new fees that are coming online in 2021 that made this biennium in particular a really difficult year to secure additional funding. We met with each of the members of the city's delegation on this request, and they were definitely supportive of the city's request, but clearly indicated that they had, there were a lot higher priorities, that they were needing to advance this session, and so committed to working with us in the coming years. Ultimately, Senator Wellman was willing to submit this request to the Senate Transportation Budget Writers, so it was considered. However, the Senate Budget Writers did not include funding for any new project at all. Their budget was completely baseline budget. One of the reasons for that is because of their concern about the outcome of Initiative 976 on this November's ballot, and concern over what that would mean to the state's transportation revenue structure. And so, with that uncertainty, they were hesitant to put any new projects in the budget. Ultimately, the final budget did not include funding for the city's request, and this is one of the items that we will continue to work on. I mentioned at the beginning that we recommend, when we worked with the city, to adopt a biennial legislative agenda. And that's because, again, the legislature works in a two-year cycle, so what wasn't possible in 2019 may very well be possible in 2020. So we tried to take a look at it at two years, the same way that the state looks at their budget in the two-year cycle. And then the last item on the city's legislative agenda was a request for $3 million for the Isaguas Opportunity Center. We knew that this was also an ambitious request. A typical capital budget appropriation for a project like this is between $500,000 to $1 million. And so, we aimed high, and in conversations with our delegation, they made it clear that this was a very ambitious request, and that they would do everything that they could, but kind of set realistic expectations for us that $3 million was going to be really hard to come by. The kind of way that this played out, we worked with, again, our representatives, particularly our Fifth District representatives, since this project is located in the Fifth District. So Representative Ramos and Representative Callen So Representative Ramos and Representative Callan submitted this request. Any project that a city or a nonprofit advances has to be sponsored by a legislator. And they typically are selective about projects that they sponsor because the more projects they put forward, the less likely their projects are to be funded because it just kind of gets spread out peanut butter style. So they advanced this request, and Senator Mullet did as well in the Senate. And because Senator Mullet's position in developing the capital budget, he was able to allocate this funding through a different program than we had originally envisioned. So originally, we were planning to go for money from the local and community project list, which is typically how cities receive capital budget dollars. And instead, Senator Mullet pursued funding for this project through the Behavioral Health Capacity Grant Program, which is also through the Department of Commerce and historically has been something that healthcare providers pursue funding for on a competitive basis. This year, in addition to providing funding for that competitive grant program, the legislature allocated additional funding for specific projects, and the Issaquah Opportunity Center was one of those projects. And that's really the reason why an allocation of $3 million was possible. In the House Proposed Budget, the appropriation of $1 million, Issaquah was one of 12 projects that received that high of a funding amount out of 182 projects statewide. So even to have received the $1 million in the House Proposed Budget was significant. And to have received the $3 million now in the final budget is truly incredible. I can't explain enough how much your delegation went to the bat for you guys on this. And so I, again, just want to encourage you to express your gratitude for their real hard work on this particular item. So I thought I'd touch base real quick on a few items that was not on the legislative agenda, but uniquely impacted the city of Issaquah and that we weighed in on at various points throughout the session. So I mentioned that transportation revenue was difficult to come by and that there were a few projects that were funded. The widening of State Route 18 is one of the few projects that did receive funding in this budget. And I think there are a couple of reasons for that. One, this has been a multi-year effort. This project in particular has the support of an entire region. So there is a broad coalition that supported this request. And then also, it was identified as a priority project for the Washington State Department of Transportation as well. And so really, those reasons kind of elevated it to something that was worth putting money towards even in a year when the budget was really tight. So the final budget includes $8 million for the widening of State Route 18 in the upcoming biennium, so 2019 through 2021. And in the following biennium, 2021 through 2023, there's legislative intent to include an additional $18 million. It's legislative intent because a legislature cannot bind a future legislature, but the intent being there is definitely a step in the right direction. The next item on the list is streamlined sales tax mitigation, and I'm sure you're all familiar with this issue. So I won't go into a lot of great detail, but I do want to say that the city is unique in this regard. And so there was a small group of cities that would have been negatively impacted had the state's termination of streamlined mitigation payments gone through. Originally, it was scheduled to sunset in October of this year. And as a result of our advocacy down in Olympia and Mayor Polly coming and testifying on several occasions, we were able to include in the operating budget additional funding for the next two years. So the issue is not completely gone, but at least the funding that the city has been relying on for your budget will be there in the next two years, and we'll see what happens two years from now. The last two items I'll go over very briefly. Minimum density. This is a bill that was one of several items that were introduced this session, kind of aimed at increasing capacity for housing development, kind of pointing the finger at local government, saying that you're not doing enough in order to create capacity. And whether or not folks agreed with that notion, a lot of the underlying challenges in the bill were because they were removing local control and using a kind of one-size-fits-all approach for every community. And so we worked really closely with city staff to figure out if this legislation had passed in its original form and in the several iterations that were proposed, what type of impact that would have on Issaquah. And every time there was a new version, and there were so many I can't count, we shared that information with your delegation, and they were able to make informed decisions about conversations to have with colleagues. And ultimately, this bill did pass the legislature, but it encourages cities to take actions to increase minimum density. And then if they do take those actions, they're eligible for a $100,000 grant through the Department of Commerce to help with the planning and implementation of those decisions. So it really kind of was a 180-degree turn from where it was originally introduced and was in large part because of cities' engagement on this issue. And then the last item, the condo liability reform. This bill, relatively speaking, kind of sailed through the legislative process, but that's only because there had been extensive work done on this issue in the previous year and then also through the interim. And so what this bill does, it raises the threshold for what's determined a breach of warranty. And hopefully, over time, the market will adjust to where we'll be seeing more mid-range condos being constructed. So with that, I will answer any questions you have. And just note that, again, encourage you to reach out to the delegation to express your gratitude. And I think we're working with city staff to hopefully put together some type of formal recognition of the entire delegation and also so they can come and speak to you all, and you can ask them questions as well.
Thank you, Shelley. Questions? Councilmember Hunt and Councilmember Winterstein, did I see your hand?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Could you please speak to the tenant protections and changes to the eviction notices and changes to those laws? And my reason for asking is that we do have some guidance in our policy manual about increasing affordable housing and associated services. So I think it's related to that. And we've also heard from our community about this topic. So I think that information would be useful about what changes were made and how they might impact people.
Yeah, yeah, good question. This was actually a very popular topic of conversation in Olympia this session. And there were three primary bills that passed into law. The first is Senate Bill 5600. This changes the notice requirement from three days to 14 days for a tenant to pay or vacate for default of payment. It makes a lot more changes to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act, but I think that one in particular has the biggest impact on tenants. There's also House Bill 1440 that requires 60 days prior written notice of an increase in rent. And then there's House Bill 1462, which provides at least 120 days written notice to tenants from landlords of plans to demolish, substantially rehab, or change the use of the premise. And all three of these bills take effect on July 28th of this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but Shelley, I wanted to thank you. I know this is your first report with us as a client. I found the material that you provided, and I've read that letter. And I appreciate the level of detail and the content that's there and the summary in the presentation. And really, what a great way to start the working relationship. Some really good results. And you've done a great job, I think, of really identifying many of the people that were involved that aren't here, and I do appreciate that. But I'm also expressing my own gratitude for your work as well. I'm very pleased for the product that you delivered us tonight and for our results. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council President Mertz.
Thanks, and thank you for that report. I just want to mention how staggered I am that they managed to get $3 million for the Opportunity Center. You know, Senator Mullet last year was very, set a very low set of expectations, but I always knew that he had hope for that. So that was pretty amazing to see. And in general, I had gone into this session with a lot of concerns, and the session turned out better, I think, from all the cities of Washington's standpoint than a lot of us had been concerned with. So thank you for your efforts and to our legislators who represented us in Olympia.
Anyone else? There is no action associated with this report this evening. Shelley, I also wanted to pile on and say what a pleasure it was to work with you, how organized you were, how you kept us up to date. And also to our policy analyst, Jeanne Paul, with the city. The two of you were a great team.
Yes.
The information was timely, relevant, and you got me down to Olympia every time I needed to be there. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. My pleasure.
The next item on our agenda this evening is ID 0439, Transit Orient Development and Opportunity Center update. This item was last before council at the March 11th work session. And tonight, city staff and representatives from King County Housing Authority and HealthPoint will be providing an informational status update. I'd like to invite permit center and project manager for oversight, Jen Davis Hayes, to make a presentation. Hi, Jen.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us here. It is great to hear the updates from Shelley and thinking about how that has really helped our project. And even before, earlier today, I got a call from a developer who is looking at some mid-range condos here. So to kind of see, you know, policymaking changes and then people actually taking some action is really exciting. So, but here tonight to talk about the TOD project. So we have our partners here for the development as well as the Opportunity Center. And so you'll be hearing from them about that update about each of those items and then talking about the overall schedule. Councilmember Hunt, I did receive your questions, and we'll be answering them throughout the presentation. And if I forget one, please let me know. So as Mayor Polly mentioned, we were here in March of 2019. And for those of you who may be new to the project, the Transit Orient Development is currently, it would be located next to the Sound Transit Issaquah Transit Center. And one of the questions that Councilmember Hunt had is, why is there plus behind the unit numbers? And so as the development team continues to refine their design, it changes. We will not get below the number of affordable housing units that we have in our MOU or the multifamily tax exemption. We've actually increased those numbers. So instead of like always having 196, 197, I put plus. And so when they actually submit for permits, they will have that exact number at that time. So these are the components of the Transit Orient Development. Again, having two buildings with over 355 units, 175 or more of those as affordable, 34,000 square feet of commercial space, including the Opportunity Center and a quarter-acre public plaza. Any questions in general? So when we were here in March, we did talk about the partnership structure. And if you remember, we talked about how the equity funding may have changed. And actually, Spectrum and King County have been continuing to work together to make this move forward. And we are really confident that this is going to come together and is going to basically not notice much of a difference from the front end. So I'm going to invite Dan Landis from King County Housing Authority up here to talk a little bit more about that and about the process that they're undergoing next.
So if you remember, the last time we were here, we talked about how the investor for the market rate units withdrew, which left us in a quandary about how to proceed. And eventually, King County Housing Authority decided we would take full risk for moving the project on with the three options here that are outlined on this slide. Either hoping that Spectrum could find another investment partner and move forward, or that we would go out and seek a new partner, or that we would just develop the entire housing ourselves. So this last one is there just because we needed something that was completely in our control if we were going to take this risk. And so this is not our lowest priority for how we want to proceed, but it's something that we are willing to do if that's what's necessary to keep this project moving forward. But I guess the quick thing I can report is we still have all the options on the table, but we're very encouraged by the progress that has been made by Spectrum in finding a new investor partner. And I think that that's what the overwhelming odds are, is that it's going to end up just back exactly like what we had been doing. So Spectrum has continued to be involved in the project as our development consultant, but we're looking forward to welcoming them back in as the partner and developer for the market rate housing.
And if I can get you to expand on that a little bit. I know the council has seen it multiple times, but we do have people in the audience this evening, perhaps watching at home, that aren't that familiar about the project in terms of what King County Housing might be doing and what Spectrum Development might be. If you could just add a few sentences about that, it would help.
So the King County project, our portion of the project, which is the Northern Tower of the two, would have approximately 165 affordable units, which we define affordability as between 40 and 60 to 70% of area median income. There would also be five units of housing for people with disabilities to be owned and operated by LEO. And then the Opportunity Center will be on the ground floor. On the South Tower, there will be, as originally envisioned, and if Spectrum is indeed the developer of that, there'll be a kidney center and a daycare, a childcare center on the first floor. And then there will be mostly market rate housing, but with a number of workforce affordable, so affordable at higher income levels than what our units are affordable at, but still tapping a need in the city of Issaquah. So the exact amount of how many affordable units, we don't know. We know what the minimum, which is 10% of their units will be, but probably, or possibly additional units will be as well.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Dan.
So we have, last week, we got the appraisals in for the TOD site and the King County Road Site. And we also got in estimates from three contractors as part of a proposal for building the replacement facility at the King County Road Site. And we are compiling those numbers. We have gotten draft language out on the purchase and sale agreement. And once we've sort of figured out how we want to sort of combine these numbers into our agreement, we'll get that out to CenturyLink, and then we're hopeful to get a signed purchase and sale agreement with them. And this is an important, critical path for us because CenturyLink, a few months ago, indicated that they weren't willing to give us an exclusive negotiating right for their site anymore. They did not renew the one that we had originally had. So we're now, we need this site control so that we have security if we're going to spend a lot more money moving this project forward. So we're really anxious to get that done and appreciate the city's help in getting together with CenturyLink and moving them along as well.
So in the development agreement, so as you know, we had an MOU which outlined the things that would be in the development agreement. And so those are going to solidify, again, to the number of units and the other commitments. And so as Dan mentioned, the purchase and sale agreement with CenturyLink is the critical path right now. And then we will work between the development team and the city to negotiate the development agreement and bring it forward to the council. During that time as well, they're exploring potentially doing land use along with the development agreement. Other development agreements have done that to save some time on the process. So we'll be looking at a CEPA checklist process. And so those things will be done before we come and present that to council. So there's probably, again, depending on what the timing is for the purchase and sale agreement, there's probably about another four-month work that needs to be done and timing if we do the land use process before we present a development agreement to the council. Any questions? Yes.
Is there more information, or are you at the end of the presentation?
That's for that, yes.
That's it for tonight?
That's for, well, I'm sorry, that's it for that, and then we'll do the Opportunity Center update.
Would you like to have Q and A on this portion or wait till you have all the information, your thoughts? Going?
Okay.
Keep going.
All right, we'll pull Dan back up if he has more questions. Okay, and so the next, we talked about having an update about the Opportunity Center. And for those of you who, this may be something new, it is 10,000 square feet of ground for commercial space in the King County Housing Authority building facing basically Northwest Maple Street. It'll be city-owned, and we went through a process, and I'm sorry to confuse, this image is from our community needs assessment. We talked about the identified needs. The actual Opportunity Center will provide integrated medical, dental, and behavioral health services. We went through an RFP process and selected HealthPoint and Valley Cities. We went through an RFP process and selected HealthPoint and Valley Cities to provide those services there. And we have today, we have two members, oh, I'll mention this, so you've already heard this, but success that we've gotten $3 million towards the opportunity center, which is great. And one thing that we are, will be coming back to you with is, in the, in the near future, an MOU to set the boundaries for, or set the guidelines for what a lease will look like. And in that lease, we will also negotiate tenant improvement, sharing, cost sharing, and all those things. But also, that those fees, or those lease fees that we, revenues that we receive will help pay for the contribution that is required by the city to, to have the opportunity center be in the TOD. And so, we have two members from the HealthPoint here today. And so, Vicky Hammond is the chief financial officer and Lisa Yohalem is the chief experience officer. So, welcome them up here and talk about an update from them.
Good evening. I'm Vicky Hammond. I'm the CFO of HealthPoint. We're really excited that the city was successful in procuring the grant for $3 million for the center. Super exciting news. We are in final stages of negotiation on the MOU. We're looking at a couple of last minute changes to the document and we expect to have that done very shortly.
Thank you.
Yep. And we had a, oh, you want to talk a little bit about the initial design that your architect?
Sure. I mean, I think Jen referred to it, that it will be an integrated healthcare facility that provides primary care, both medical, or medical, dental, and behavioral health services.
So, I'm assuming we're ready for questions now? Okay. Questions on either the opportunity center or the project general? Lindsay, Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. Knowing that the $3 million in the opportunity center funds has been acquired or come through from the state, do we have any concerns about losing that with any of the delays that are happening with the TOD project?
So, we, we have looked at that and we believe that the commitments that we need to make for those funds can be done during the design and pre-construction phases. So, as things move forward, we think we're okay with that. Because we, we considered that during the request, because we obviously don't want to make a request, knowing that it wasn't possible. So, there's always a risk, but I believe that we have looked at that.
Councilmember Winterstein?
I didn't have any questions, but Mary Lou, I'm inspired by you kind of helping people who maybe are listening understand a little bit better. We were throwing around a lot of acronyms today. MOU, DA, SEPA, TOD. TOD stands for Transit Oriented Development. And it's a strategy to build and bring housing, often affordable housing, in proximity of transit, high-capacity transit centers like our transit center here on the valley floor. It's a way to provide housing that otherwise wouldn't be brought just by pure market forces. It's a concept that's well-understood and people are pursuing TOD projects, not just here in Isiqua, but around the region, as one of the strategies to help us address the need for housing. And at the same time, handle additional growth and allow those, those, not only the newcomers, but upcomers as well, perhaps get started in lives and careers here in Isiqua and not have the demands or have the requirements of owning maybe multiple vehicles to get around, hence the proximity to the transit center. So, it's a very key, and in this idea, what's very unique here as well is, you've heard, it's very integrated. It's not just about housing. I think these, these people are great representatives of, of what else we're trying to do to create the necessary services in proximity to where they live to help people in many ways, not just with their housing. So, that TOD, all of that, TOD meant all of that.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Part of the, at the beginning, one of your first slides talks a little bit about the timeline generally and the plaza. And so, I, yep, you were there. So, the public plaza, I know that, that we previously talked about the community engagement piece around that. And so, I wondered if you could give an update about what that process will be like, how people can engage on that topic.
Sure. So, as we mentioned, the, once CenturyLink property is under contract, we will proceed with negotiating the development agreement. We had talked about having another community meeting during that time, during, before it comes to council. And then, during, of course, the development commission meetings and council study sessions, there'll be opportunities for folks to talk about that as well. But we intended to have another public meeting, which looks at the, the whole project.
Okay. And then, also a question about time, timing of the DA and when council will see that.
Yes.
So, there's a lot of moving pieces.
Sure.
Just wondered.
Yes. So, again, we, they expect to present an offer to CenturyLink in the next week or two. Negotiation for a purchase and sale agreement, I'm not sure how long that would take. But again, after that, then we expect about four months we need, before we come to council with a development agreement, because of the steps that we need to do for that. So, that in-between piece is the uncertainty, you know? Hopefully, we can get that done within, you know, a few months before we start going in the development agreement. But, and they are, obviously, they want that to happen, so they are working diligently and really, we, 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 the city are actually meeting with CenturyLink leadership, Government Affairs tomorrow to kind of, kind of make sure that everybody's on the same page. So, we're not just sitting back letting them, you know, do all the work there. So, we're really trying to influence that as well.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Hunt. The whole issue of control of land is a real critical turning point for us. So, these are big conversations that are happening over the next few weeks. Councilmember Ray, did you have a question? Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hunt?
And one more, one more comment, which is about the transit-oriented nature of this as well as the childcare. So, childcare is another need in our community. And I think, to the extent possible, it'd be really great to work to ensure that the people living in the building and also people that are lower income are able to access those services. So, to the extent possible that we could work on that, that would be wonderful, because that's another big need in our community.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Jen and team. There is no council action required this evening. Big thank you to everyone who stayed for audience comments, which tends to be at the beginning of our meeting. But tonight, we had lots and lots of special presentations, so we will be moving into audience comments now. This is your opportunity to address your counsel. The guidelines for public participation will be displayed on the overhead screen. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Those who signed up will be called up first. And if you did not sign up, don't worry, I will ask for other speakers before closing that portion of the meeting. If you are here speaking on behalf of a group, please identify that when you're up at the microphone. And Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Michelle Drovdahl and Irene Wickstrom.
I'm Michelle Drovdahl. I'm the regional manager for the Isiqua Library. And accompanying me is Irene Wickstrom. She's the librarian services manager. And we're here today to brag, oh, inform you about the library and to highlight some of our programs that align with the city of Isiqua's recently adopted strategic plan. You've all received the 2018 Library Board Report that features many of our programs and activities. And thank you, Tisha, and the Library Advisory Board for putting it together.
We have chosen four areas of the strategic plan where the library has made connections. I'd like to start with social and economic vitality. We offer a number of services and resources at the library. For the grandparents who get a Kindle or iPad for their birthday or holiday, we offered classes at the senior center on how to use them for family pictures, eBooks, and texting. If they couldn't come to our series at the senior center, we have a wonderful tech tutor who is in the library on Tuesday and Thursday evenings. From February through April the 15th, we have tax help sponsored by ARP in our meeting room. And our meeting room is available for use by the public, except on Saturdays during tax season. In regards to community prosperity, at the library, we foster civic culture through programs and events. We had many events in celebration of Welcoming Week, and we'd like to thank Mayor Polly again for attending and participating in our Rangoli program. We were happy to march in the Salmon Days Parade and the Friends had a booth where we had a children's book giveaway. And under Equity, we aim to provide all community members access to our resources. For example, one of our outreaches is Echo Glen Children's Center, where we provide quarterly programs to improve life skills. We had a bike repair workshop, a poetry slam, and inspirational speakers to motivate the youth. Isiqua Schools nominated families to participate in primetime, a reading program for third and fourth grade struggling readers. After the families enjoyed a meal, they listened to stories and did reading comprehension exercises. We're happy to share that once the program was over, we continue to see these families regularly using the library. And finally, under People, we foster diverse opportunities through talktime classes where English as a second language speakers can practice their new language and make new friends. We also offer citizenship classes in preparation for naturalization.
We're very proud of being part of the city of Isiqua and that we can support the city's priorities with our programs. I've also brought some June calendar, our June calendar of events with us, so in hope that you all can come and visit a program that you would like. And then, of course, at any time, ask me about a good book. I am always ready. Thank you for your time.
Michelle and Irene, thank you very much. Michelle, I understand there's some changes coming and I'd like you just to stay at the microphone for a second while Tisha brings over a certificate.
Certainly.
Just in case everyone's not aware, tonight will be Michelle's last time reporting to Isiqua City Council in her role as East Region Manager. Later this year and early into next year, King County Library Systems will be shifting its management structure. As part of the transition beginning in January, Michelle will be overseeing a region that does not include Isiqua. And we will have a new regional manager. Michelle, I want to thank you for your service to Isiqua over the past six years. You bring the best possible library experience to our community. We value your active participation in our community, especially given that we are one of five that you serve. As you said in your report out this evening with Irene, you're at, you sponsor numerous events, you show up at numerous city events like Salmon Days Parade, you served on the Old Town Vitality Task Force, and just have been such a strong and faithful supporter of our library. So, in recognition of your service, Tisha presented you with a certificate of appreciation on our behalf. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Well, thank you. It's a wonderful place to work.
Fabulous. Tisha, is there anyone else that has signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Larry Franks.
My hands are cold. Go behind you.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Polly, and supportive staff members. My name is Larry Franks. I live at 24001 Southeast 103rd Street, Isiqua. It was rudely pointed out to me by a prior member that I'm actually in the King County, but only by 100 yards, but a 47-year resident of this lovely town. I also get to represent the Friends of Isiqua Salmon Hattery. And I'm here tonight to basically give you a report on the status of salmon in the state and then relative to Isiqua in particular. So, we're at a time of the year where forecasts have been made, how many fish are expected to come back from the, the ocean. And we're at the point where the earliest fish have started to come back. These are spring Chinook. If you're a fisher person, they used to be known as June hogs, because these were the big guys, the 30-pound-plus fish going up the Columbia River and the Fraser River. So, the forecasts were already dismal. They were already at the, the lowest in the last 10 years. We're running 10 percent of the fish that used to come back a century ago. And now, the early returns are in. Those spring Chinook are coming in at even less than half of the, the forecast, which was already terrible. We care because these early fish are the harbingers of the Chinook run altogether. And what this is telling us is that even the bad forecasts are being underrun. We're going to be in trouble again at the Isiqua Salmon Hattery. To remind you of one of the issues that the city has taken action on, thank you, is the predation problem that we have in Lake Samamish and Lake Washington. So, roughly 10 percent of the fish that we release actually make it to saltwater. One of the biggest reasons for that are the predators in the, the two lakes. There was a bill that was passed in the Washington Legislature that was aimed at helping with that. Unfortunately, somewhere in committee, the, the bill got weakened. So, the possibilities of being able to take care of the bass predation were greatly reduced in some committee. And I'm seeking advice from multiple sources to, to understand that process. I know a lot more about the biological processes than I do about the legislative processes. So, unfortunately, I have to get smart in, in that space as well. In that same area, the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe is doing a test fishery in Lake Samamish. So, they're looking at netting some of the, the bass out. And we're looking forward to finding out what their results are. They have yet to, to publish their numbers. But that could make a significant difference for not only the Chinook coming back to the hatchery, but the Cockney that are also endangered in this timeframe. We've met multiple times with Department of Fish and Wildlife biologists. They all agree that there's a problem. They can't agree on what sort of actions to take. We're trying to identify more individual actions. Trout Unlimited held a perch derby. So, perch is one of the predators, not the top of the list, this year. And unfortunately, it wasn't as successful as theirs last year. Last year, people logged over 600 fish. This year, less than 100. And unfortunately, I believe it was timing. We had just released the 2.5 million smolt from the, the hatchery, so those fish were full. The, the perch just weren't biting. The Friends of Isiqua Salmon Hattery is planning an Elected Officials Day. So, we've done this in the past, bringing together, of course, all of you are invited, and our state representatives in particular, to discuss fishy topics, find out what sort of things can be done. So, when those details are available, we'll get a, get that information to you. For the next council meeting, I'd like to give a brief history of salmon. So, unfortunately, it starts 400 million years ago. But my intent is to talk about the, the history so we can learn from it. And you'll get an idea of the trajectory that these fish are on and why. At the Community Awards, I mentioned that we had lost two races of fish, of salmon, in this watershed already that are now extinct. And there were gasps from the audience. And I'm thinking, well, this is stuff that's in front of me, I hear you, that's in front of me all the time, but not to all of our decision makers. So, I'm looking forward to sharing that history and hoping to learn from it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Larry. It should be of anyone else signed up?
Yes, Elizabeth Mopin.
I live at 100 Big Bear Place in Isiqua. I had a conversation with the executive director of our local food bank. And one of the things that came up in our conversation was that we had a unfortunate weather event this last winter. And a number of people were without housing and no place to go. The library was closed, the transportation system kind of dismantled itself. And we have have no emergency shelter that was open in Issaquah. I think if we do some pre-planning and take into account that difficult weather events are becoming more common, that we should be prepared this next year and the years to come, that should there be a catastrophic weather event or a flood or other disaster, we would be ready and poised to open up emergency shelter in a timely manner. And I also wanted to give a shout out to our libraries, which for years have served as de facto day centers for people who need to get out of the cold. I would really like to see Issaquah open a dedicated day center. Our Opportunity Center is not going to focus on how to get people into housing and connected with other services, so a day center could really help with that. We don't have a shelter here. If we had a day center, we could run some of the youth who need to be in shelter up to Redmond at the time that they need to go. We could get other people to the men's shelter or to Sophia Way, but right now, people are dependent on the buses, and getting to Redmond is no easy task. If they get there and they're not successful in the lottery, they're stuck in Redmond overnight with no way to get back. So those are just a few things I'd like you to take into consideration. Thank you very much.
Tisha, is there anyone else?
No.
Is there anyone else who did not sign up that would like to come and address council this evening? I see Dave making his way to the microphone.
David Wagner, 360 Northwest Dogwood Street, also representing the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Issaquah Post 3436. Sometimes I wonder if I'm just wasting my time coming down here. As a reminder, that three days from now is June 6th, and how many of you remember what June 6th is? Well, this year it's special because it's 75 years since D-Day. A lot of folks think, well, is that a holiday? No, it's not. Should it be? Probably not for us, but I will tell you, the French definitely celebrate D-Day. In fact, it is a holiday in France, and the French come out and expressly thank especially D-Day survivors. What you may take for granted is, in this country, our freedom on a daily basis, and sometimes I wonder if we just flap our gums about that and we don't really take seriously what our freedoms are. You know, we're in a wonderful building, talking about all those things that make our city great and even better, but the basic thing is that freedom. And what I know on D-Day is that in the first hour of the boats going ashore, 1,000 young men lost their lives for that freedom. 1,000 within the first hour. We lost 4,400 soldiers that day on the five beaches. Let me ask you this. Anybody be able to name the beaches on D-Day? Anybody in this room besides me name the beaches on D-Day?
Dave, make sure you address the council.
I know, I can't ask those questions, but I'm asking as a reminder that maybe you want to take some time to do that. Sometimes I ask myself, is it really worth it to come down and talk about that history? Because it seems like so long ago. But not for me, because my dad served in World War II, and I think there was another council members whose grandfather served in World War II as well. So let's remember that 75 years ago, that D-Day was a very important thing that happened in our country and gave us the freedom that we have to this day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, Dave. Is there anyone else this evening who would like to address their council? Second call. Anyone wishing to address council this evening? And third and last call. Thank you. It was great to, I thank you first for your patience in waiting. We had a lot of special presentations, but it was really helpful for council to hear about our library services report out, the state of our salmon, emergency shelter space, and the 75th anniversary of D-Day reminder. So thank you all for that. That was great. The next item on the agenda is Committee and Regional Reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. No report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting on May 22nd, as did Mayor Pauli, and there were three items on regular business at that meeting. The first one was that the board directed the Cascade staff and General Counsel to investigate how our RCFCs affect low-income individuals and how we might have a more equitable rate system for water charges. The RCFCs are the Regional Capital Facilities Charge. So parts of that work will include, for example, assessing the way in which RCFC assessments are calculated under the current methodology, with attention to the way in which these calculations may impact housing for low-income and homeless individuals and homeless shelters, and then also looking into a pilot project that would enhance Cascade's ability to test and study the effect of waivers, for example, and other things that we might be able to do. Then there was also a update on a financing item, authorizing the borrowing of money and the issuance of sale on assistance refunding revenue bonds. And then there was also a resolution regarding authorizing additional services regarding wastewater, wastewater sewage and septic collection. And this item, we will be talking about a bit more at Good of the Order, so I'll save that. And there was no action taken at the meeting regarding that, and we'll have some more information from Mayor Pauli at Good of the Order on that. And then the next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board will be June 26th at 3:30 at the Cascade Office in Bellevue. And Land and Shore Committee will meet this Thursday here in council chambers at 6:30. And we have three items on the agenda. The first one is Polygon Northwest Affordable Housing Development Agreement amendments. This is a discussion item. And then we have AB 7802, amend 2019 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments to Add Community Facilities Redesignation and Rezone Consideration of Issaquah School District Parcel. This is the action item. And then also Initial Evaluation of Issaquah's Residential Zoning and Allowed Housing Types, and this is a discussion item. The following meeting will be July 10th, and that's also due for the move because of the July 4th holiday. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The June 11th Services and Safety Committee meeting has been canceled. We are planning to have our July meeting on July 9th. On June 13th, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will meet at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters, and the agenda for that meeting has not yet been set, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. This Thursday, June 6th, at PSRC Headquarters in Seattle is the next meeting of the Growth Management Policy Board. On the agenda, we will be discussing the draft supplemental environmental impact statement. We will be reviewing and discuss the public feedback that has been received, and then following that, we will take action and the board will be identifying its preferred alternative and be making a recommendation to the executive board on the preferred alternative for the development of the Vision 2050 Regional Growth Strategy. After that, we will complete our review of the various proposed chapters for policies within Vision 2050, and we'll be covering the climate change chapter. And on the conclusion of that, we are going to discuss and then take action to proceed with preparation of the final set of policies known as the multi-county planning policies for their inclusion in Vision 2050. And we are still, with this work, we remain on track to release the complete draft of Vision 2050 later in July this year, which will begin a whole other round of public presentations and discussion and review, with the long game being it'll be in the spring of 2020 before finalization of the Vision 2050 plan. So that's GMP coming up this Thursday. Last Thursday in Seattle on May 30th, along with Mayor Pauli, I attended the PSRC General Assembly. It's a yearly meeting where we do, what they did is we reviewed the work on the development of Vision 2050, surprise. We did review and ratify the PSRC 2020 and 2021 budget, and they elected officers for the PSRC Executive Committee. And then lastly, the Council Infrastructure Committee, our next scheduled meeting is June 20th, and the agenda is not yet set, and there may not be one, I don't know. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Bateese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is going to meet next Wednesday at 7:00 PM, June 12th at Renton City Hall. There are a number of discussion items, homelessness, system governance, King County Charter Review, Vision 2050, but no action is anticipated on any of those topics. However, the pre-PIC meeting is particularly interesting this time around, Metro Long-Range Transit Vision and Funding. At the June 12th Pre-PIC Workshop, King County Metro General Manager Rob Gannon will present on Metro's long-range vision to meet the region's growing demand for transit and the funding that will be necessary to implement that vision. Metro's long-range vision for transit service, Metro Connects, includes ambitious goals to greatly expand the availability of transit throughout the region. This includes more local choices, a growing network of frequent all-day service, and a dramatic increase in capital facilities to enhance the reliability, speed, and efficiency of transit. At the Pre-PIC Workshop in June, members will hear about the future investment needs, where there are gaps in available funding, and Metro's plans to engage in regional planning efforts to make the vision of Metro Connects a reality. And I will remind that that is open to all. You don't have to be a member of PIC to attend that meeting. This, oh, sorry, one last thing. There is going to be Wednesday, July 24th at 4:00 PM in PSRC Chambers, a GMPC meeting. That agenda is still TBD. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Martz. So moving on to the mayor's report, there will be no executive session this evening, and as I had mentioned in earlier meetings, while we're in a city administrative recruitment process, I'll be giving an update in the mayor's report. We have hired Caris Consulting. They're spearheading our recruitment process. The job announcement was posted live on Caris's website on May 3rd, and we will be accepting applications through June 12th. The city is also advertising the position on its website and social media accounts for additional exposure. We have had a good response so far, and Caris is currently conducting a first round of screening interviews prior to recommending a list of finalists. Public engagement survey is open, running parallel with the other advertising strategies, and it's open until June 12th. And we have scheduled a meet and greet for the community, connect with the finalists on July 25th, so please save the date. I wanted to talk about a project that is on the consent calendar this evening for approval. It's a grant for the Lower Issaquah Creek Stream and Reparient Habitat Enhancement Project, AB 7768. Design and permitting activities for this project are now underway for the Lower Issaquah Creek Stream and Habitat Enhancement Project. Grants have been obtained to fund the majority of the design and permitting phase, and I'm looking over at Tisha, do we have slides for tonight? There was a location map. If we have that, that would be great. Thank you. City staff continue to evaluate opportunities for external grants to assist in the funding of the construction phase, which is scheduled to start in 2021. The Agenda Bill on Consent this evening requests council's authorization to submit multiple applications to support the revenue needed for construction. This project would improve the habitat conditions for Chinook and other species of salmon by restoring approximately 1,200 lineal feet of Lower Issaquah Creek by adding features such as backwater and/or side channels, woody debris, and native shrubs and trees. Other planned improvements for this project include removing existing armoring and invasive plant and incorporating a pedestrian trail, viewing areas, and interpretive stage. The next Coffee with the Mayor event will be on Thursday, June 6th, from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Starbucks Coffee on Gilman, and I'm looking forward to seeing who comes for coffee. And that concludes the mayor's report. Moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. And does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? All right, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's meeting agenda.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor of, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Under regular business this evening, we do not have any items, so we'll be moving to Good of the Order. Do council members have anything for Good of the Order? Deputy Council President Bateese.
So I just wanted to mention that I had talked a little bit about attending the cultural conversations in Bellevue about a month and a half ago, and they are holding as part of cultural conversations a session tomorrow on June 4th from 1:00 to 2:30, and it's called Invisible Disabilities: The Power in Connection and Finding Your Voice. And I just thought I'd let everybody know that. It is at the Crossroads Community Center, and all of those cultural conversations, I think, are very powerful. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Councilmember Ray.
I would just like to take a moment to respond to Dave Wagner. It's Utah, Omaha, Sore, Gold, and Juneau.
Oh, well done. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other items for Good of the Order? Councilmember Winterstein.
Just wanted to let my colleagues know that Chris and Vicky and I are joining staff, and we're having our first ad hoc committee for rules and procedures tomorrow evening.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much. Good to know. I also wanted to mention that for the upcoming EFOR Board Meeting that Councilmember Ray referred to, I'm going to be standing in as an alternate, and I'm looking for somebody else to join me on the night of June 13th. Please just let me know by email. That'd be great, so I can let Eastside Fire and Rescue know. And then Vicky and I have one other item, but I'm looking around to see if there's anything else first. Okay. Councilmember Hunt and I have been attending the Cascade Water Alliance Board Meetings throughout this year, and one of the items that has been discussed at the board meeting but is not typical business of the board is some work that the water districts and cities are interested in doing to work with the King County Waste Management Division and try and change the governance model. What we have noticed is that many or all of the members at Cascade Water Alliance want to be involved in this conversation, and just for the general audience to be clear, we are a member of that organization because we purchase water from Seattle in block format to supplement the water supply we use with our own wells. So this is how we provide enough water for our city. As a member there, we work solely on drinking water issues. However, over the last year or so, many of the members, cities, and organizations wanted to have a second conversation about waste contracts. It's been a long time since cities and waste service providers have negotiated contracts with King County, and there's a discussion about changing the governance model so that cities and sewer districts have more of a voice and a vote at the table. So this happened rather organically. The conversation they had at the recent board meeting was whether or not a resolution should be passed to expand the scope of services that Cascade Water provides to cities and districts. And it was kind of all flowing along until some of the board members said, you know, we really should be bringing this back to our boards or bringing this back to our councils and talking about what it means. So when the original agreement to form this partnership was developed, it did provide an opportunity in there to expand to cover other utility services if needed. an opportunity in there to expand to cover other utility services if needed. My thoughts in listening to the conversation are that this is a good group to bring the correct players together, to prepare materials and meet with King County. But I'm a little concerned about expanding it in a really broad way, where we are then taking on a new voice and a new expense to the city in terms of managing our wastewater services. So, have spoken staff tracks this as well, so Public Works Director Sheldon Lynn has been paying attention. He's in favor of a limited expansion in Cascade's services to members that would cover just these negotiations. I sent out some information, I think Joanne sent out some information, I believe it was last week. Hopefully, that provided enough background for you, but Vicky and I can answer questions and talk about it. Just looking for a head nod whether or not the council is in agreement with this limited expansion in their role. I'll answer questions. Let's, Member Ray.
It's really a question. So, this, when we're talking wastewater, that's really the domain of Metro right now, or King County Natural Resources and Parks, right?
Yeah.
So, if we were to expand Cascade's role, I'm just trying to put a finger on what the issue is here.
Sure.
If we were to expand their role, we would just be using them as a negotiating proxy? Is that kind of what's being thought about, to represent the members?
Not even that much. Really, the proposal in a limited sense would be for them to provide the administrative and technical support for the members to be advocating for the change in the governance model. So, preparing meeting materials, setting up appointments with the county, but the advocacy voice would be coming from the Cascade members, which would be the water districts and the cities. And currently, the decision-making body for rate structures for Metro includes various parties, but the majority vote is with King County. So, if they approve a capital improvement plan for $1 billion and set up a rate structure, we just accept it. We have some -- we have an advisory voice, but we don't have any real teeth to what we're doing. Because the rate pairs are our rate pairs, this is a move to try and get more of a voice and a vote for those that are actually first in line with the rate pairs. Council President Martz.
I have a question. These sorts of things often come through SCA as a first step when there's consideration of changing roles, either with regulatory bodies or other new entities to speak for King County cities? How come this one didn't come through SCA?
That's a good question. That came up at the board meeting as well, actually. I'm not sure that it just hasn't reached it yet. The reason it feels like it's moving a little quickly now is because the resolution was actually supposed to be voted on by Cascade at this meeting. And a lot of the member organizations wanted to understand, "What are we signing up for? What does it cost? Is this a significant expansion or a limited expansion?" And so, I'm not sure that it is yet on SCA's radar, but I believe it is supposed to be. It's just that all of the members on Cascade Water Alliance are actively, have been actively meeting and trying to get King County's ear for six months. So, we've already been doing this. It was more a matter of formalizing it, but I do believe it's going to go to SCA, too. Any other questions? Councilmember Ray.
Well, you mentioned cost.
Yeah.
So, what is the anticipated cost to City of Issaquah if we expand Cascade's role in this way?
I don't know, but we can ask for it. Thanks. Councilmember Hunt.
An observation on the cost also. In the resolution that we looked at, there isn't a cost, but I think the cost is also very much related to the scope of the work that's done, and how much we actually want. And so, I think that the resolution is a step in that direction, but then, as far as the scope and determining exactly what administrative role Cascade might play, et cetera, that will, I think, come down to the cost.
I mean, the original resolution just broadly stated that it would be a negotiating body for sewage services. And a lot of people went, "Oh, we don't know if we need that much." So, that's good. We can ask that whatever the resolution, when the scope is clearly defined, that there is some sort of cost that we understand as well. And I'm getting the sense that this is of interest to you, and you would like us to come back before we vote as a board on it. Head nods. Any other questions? Great. I think I have what I need.
I've got one last one. I'm just going to follow up on Tola's comment, and it really is, can we ask Cascade why Sound Cities hasn't been involved in this discussion, or if that's appropriate?
Yeah. I think, I don't know if it's Cascade, it's -- this organically came from some members. And so, the bigger picture would be water districts probably aren't as familiar with the power of the SCA in terms of being a great voice.
Nor the members, right?
Right. So, definitely got SCA written down here as well to try and make sure we're pulling in everybody we need to pull. So, we'll pass that back as well. Councilmember Winterstein, do you have a question?
Just a comment. I mean, the members are City of Bellevue, City of Issaquah, City of Kirkland, City of Redmond, Sumamish Water, Plateau Water, Skyway Water and Sewer District, and City of Taguila. So, there's five cities and two districts. That's SCA.
Yeah. It's a subset.
Yeah. It's one-seventh.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? I think I have what I need. I'm planning on drafting up an email response and sending it back to the Cascade administration so it can become part of the discussion the next time this comes back to the board. But I will be letting them know that my council is very interested in a defined scope and a cost associated with that scope prior to authorizing us to agree to expand. Okay. Anything else?
I do have one question.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Is there any -- is something that Metro, and earlier I think you said Parks, but it's King County Metro that -- and is there anything that they've done with rates or service that precipitated this conversation?
Yes. Part of what is precipitating this is since King County took over Metro Sewer Services --
They merged.
-- years, more than a decade and a half ago, they have not been able to successfully negotiate contracts with different entities. So, there's been some lingering issues out there on that. And one is, in the approval of a capital improvement plan, the actual financial obligations exceed the length of the contract. And a lot of jurisdictions are saying that's pretty darn awkward for us to agree to pay bills when our contract terms don't align. And so, it's a couple of things like that that sort of raised the radar of the fact that the cities and water and sewer districts didn't have a big voice in that capital improvement plan, and what elements were included or not.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful.
And if there is nothing else for good of the order, I'm just going to give a little bit of a peek ahead. There is a June 7th special council meeting on a Friday from 4 till 8, 9. From 4 till 9, it's a strategy and budget planning workshop in the Pickering Room, which is at City Hall Northwest, next to the Holiday Inn. June 10th, there's a council work session at 6:30 PM, and the potential agenda items for the work session are an update on the Mobility Master Plan, City Hall's Facilities Long-Range Planning Update, and introduction to the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Plan. And that's it. So, if there are no other items, there is no executive session this evening, and we are adjourned at 8:40.